Good evening, calling to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the El Segundo City Council, Tuesday, October 4th. Our invocation will be given by Pastor Eric J. from St. John's Lutheran Church. Is Pastor J. here? In that case, the invocation will be given by the city clerk and council member Dugan will lead us in the pledge. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you will guide the hearts and minds of all who exercise responsibility of civic leadership in El Segundo. May the effect of the work done here this evening promote the welfare of all citizens in our community. Amen.
And if you're heard, please join me. Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, this evening, it is my extraordinary honor to recognize somebody. And for everybody who's here who doesn't usually come to the meetings, especially young people, you are in for such a treat tonight. We are honoring somebody who is a national asset, who you're gonna hear her achievements, and this commendation doesn't even begin to tell you what her achievements are and the impact she has, not only on our country's national defense, but the world. You're gonna hear some fabulous things, and I would say, when she's done, you should run outside and go meet her, shake her hand and take a picture. Sorry, Dr. Austin. But we're really thrilled tonight to have Dr. Wanda Austin and her husband, Mr. Wade Austin, here tonight. So, whereas, Dr. Wanda M. Austin's career at the Aerospace Corporation began in 1979. She held positions of increasing responsibility and served as the president and CEO from 2008 until her retirement on October 1st, 2016. She has been instrumental in establishing a strong, ongoing partnership with the city of El Segundo and the Aerospace Corporation. And whereas, the Aerospace Corporation provides technical and analytical expertise to national space programs and is a cornerstone of the El Segundo business community. The Aerospace Corporation has over 3,500 employees, with 70% holding advanced degrees and over 700 holding a PhD. And whereas, Dr. Austin is internationally recognized for her work in satellite and payload system acquisition, systems engineering, and system simulation. And whereas, Dr. Austin's unparalleled career includes an appointment to serve on the President's Council of Advisors on Science and Technology, directly advising the President and the executive office of the President. And whereas, Dr. Austin served as a member of the NASA Advisory Council and U.S. Human Space Flight Plans Committee, both of which were White House-commissioned. Dr. Austin was appointed to the Defense Science Board, is a member of the California Council on Science and Technology, the National Academy of Engineering, the American Academy of Arts and Sciences, the International Academy of Astronautics, and is a Fellow of the American Institute of Aeronautics and Astronautics. She serves on the Board of Directors of the Space Foundation and on the Board of Trustees for the University of Southern California and the National Geographic Society. And whereas, Dr. Austin is committed to inspiring the next generation to study the STEM disciplines in the El Segundo schools and beyond. Under her leadership, the Aerospace Corporation has participated in Math Pounds, Us First Robotics, the Greater Los Angeles Education-Aerospace Partnership, and Change the Equation. And therefore, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of El Segundo, California, hereby grant Dr. Austin an honorary key to our city in recognition of her distinguished career, commitment to our community, and inspirational leadership. We take great pleasure in honoring and congratulating her on her retirement. And I'm honored to give you your key in front, Dr. Austin. Welcome. Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm serious, to the young people, you should run out and meet Dr. Austin. She advises President Obama. Okay, our next proclamation will be given by Dr. Brand.
Thank you, Mayor. There's our fire chief now, and that's good, because my proclamation is in relation to Fire Prevention Week. Whereas, home fires killed more than 2,745 people in the United States in 2014, according to the latest research from the nonprofit National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to an estimated 367, 500 home fires. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas, three out of five home fire deaths in 2009 to 2013 were caused by fires in homes with no smoke alarms or no working smoke alarms. And whereas, when smoke alarms should have operated but did not do so, it was usually because batteries were missing, disconnected, or dead. And whereas, half of home fire deaths result from fires reported at night between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, when most people are asleep. And whereas, residents should replace smoke alarms every 10 years and install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas, residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, the El Segundo Fire Department, which is dedicated to the safety of life and property from the devastating effects of fires and other emergencies, is joined by concerned citizens of our community, as well as businesses, the school district, service clubs, and other organizations in its fire safety efforts. Now, therefore, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of El Segundo, in commemoration of the great Chicago Fire of 1871, which killed 250 persons, left 100,000 homeless, and destroyed more than 17,400 buildings, and in order to raise the awareness in the community of the importance of practicing fire prevention and fire safety to avoid needless loss of property and life, do hereby proclaim the week of October 9th through October 15th, 2016, as Fire Prevention Week. Further, the mayor and members of the city council join Fire Chief Christopher Donovan in inviting the El Segundo community to observe Fire Prevention Week by practicing fire prevention and fire safety year-round, and heeding the message, don't wait, check the date, replace smoke alarms every 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brand.
Wanna have him speak and then do a picture?
Sure. Well, thank you very much for the proclamation, and this is certainly an important week for the fire service. Prevention is an important aspect of the work we do, and the message to the community is smoke detectors do indeed save lives. What's important this year is, we've, year after year, talked about the importance of changing batteries. Usually, we say, when the time changes, fall forward, spring back, we expect you to change your bat- or ask you to change your batteries. Now, we're taking it a step further, and smoke detectors that are more than 10 years old should be replaced. Unlike the great Chicago Fire, smoke detectors weren't invented then, so that wouldn't have made a difference, but they do make a difference today. Smoke detectors most definitely save lives. So, for those in our community, we highly encourage you to actively participate in your home safety, make sure you have active working smoke detectors, practice safe escape routes with your family, and it certainly can save a life. So, thank you, sir.
Don't go too far, Chief Donovan. Need you and Chief Taverre to come up. This is an exciting evening tonight in El Segundo. The chiefs are gonna introduce some of their new officers and firefighters. Too bad you don't have a microphone, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm the mayor, members of the city council. I'd like to introduce you to our two newest officers. And first off, Ray Lopez. Ray, come up here, please. Ray was born in Torrance, but he was primarily raised in El Segundo. In fact, he graduated in 2006 from El Segundo High School, where he said he was the best baseball player on the team. Unfortunately, the Dodgers didn't pick him up, so he went to El Camino College, and then Mount Mercy University in Cedar Rapids, where he continued to play baseball. He failed, he failed getting to baseball, right? Okay, we did that. But he played, but he played baseball and football throughout his school career and still enjoys instructing baseball. He lives in Redondo Beach and is engaged, his fiancee. So, like I said, you should, one of our newest, youngest guys, and I guarantee one of our best, so thank you.
Well, welcome. We're so glad you're here.
And this is officer, it's our newest officer, well, that's in patrol right now, Casey Perkins, and just graduated from the Los Angeles Sheriff's Academy last, two weeks ago. He was born in Redondo Beach and raised in Longdale, but graduated from El Segundo High School in 2009, correct, Casey? He then attended El Camino College, and in 2011, joined the United States Marine Corps, where he attained the rank of sergeant. He was deployed to 29 Palms, lived there, and recently moved back to the South Bay. Are you in the reserves now? That's good. He's a stay with me then. He just came out of the Marines when we hired him, so again, one of our newest, youngest, brightest stars, so thank you.
Well, welcome. And wait, don't go away yet, and thank you for your service. Chief, is this the first time we've had two El Segundo High School alumni join at once?
No, we've had several before. And I was younger, oh, they joined all the time. They did, they did. I was the anomaly at the time. We used to have, we had a different type of program back then, but a lot of our kids came up to the cadet program. The, for instance, at one time, there was five or six of them who joined all at the same time.
Well, that's wonderful. Let's get a photo of you, sir, and your officers.
Let's make sure Chief Donovan's not in the picture, that's all I care about. We're going to go.
Thank you. Well, we're delighted you're here.
Okay, Mayor, continuing this great evening, we have four new employees, and so I'd first like to bring up Mike Davies. Mike was born and raised in Culver City, California, and after high school attendance, Santa Barbara City College studying graphic design. He then decided to take advantage of dual citizenship, and at 21, moved to London, England. And this is an incredible experience. So, Mike worked as a producer and DJ for the BBC, eventually becoming an internationally acclaimed DJ for a music station, punk rock, if you could believe it. And he passed the background with flying colors. After 10 years of touring Europe, Mike moved back to the United States to pursue a career in the fire service. He graduated from El Camino College Fire Academy in 2009, and was picked up as a reserve firefighter and fire inspector with Manhattan Beach Fire Department. In 2013, Mike was hired as a tactical paramedic with the Hawthorne Police Department SWAT team, and was later sent through the Los Angeles Sheriff's Academy, eventually working patrol for Hawthorne Police. He then came to Essentis and got hired by the El Segundo Fire Department. Mike is currently a firefighter, too, is a Los Angeles County accredited paramedic, and he is currently assigned to our Fire Station 32. This is Mike Davies.
Welcome.
Next, Mayor and council, I'm pleased to introduce Eric Anderson, who spent most of his life in Torrance, California. Badger, after graduating from West Torrance High School, he attended Cal State University of Long Beach, where he received a Bachelor's of Arts in Film and Electronic Media. I think we have our new social media guy here. He then decided to have a change in career paths and began his pursuit for a career in the fire service. Eric attended the El Camino Fire Academy and served as a reserve firefighter with the Vernon and Torrance Fire Department. He also earned an associate's degree in fire and emergency technology. Most recently, he graduated from UCLA Paramedic School and is also a Los Angeles County accredited paramedic. His current work assignment is Fire Station 31, and this is Eric Anderson.
Welcome.
All right, next, we have Udon Duick, who is originally from West Hills, California, but he spent the last eight years in Asheville, North Carolina. Udon attended Oxnard Community College Fire Academy and worked as an auxiliary firefighter for the Downey Fire Department. He was then hired as a firefighter with the Gastonia, North Carolina Fire Department, and after two years there, was hired by the Asheville Fire Department, where he has served as a firefighter and an engineer. We hired him back to California. Udon has an associate's degree in fire protection technology from AB Technical College in North Carolina, and many job-related certificates, as well as a wealth of experience. Udon is glad to be back in Southern California, close to family and friends, and is currently assigned to Fire Station 31. Firefighter Udon Duick.
Welcome.
Okay, last and certainly not least, 'cause he'll probably pound me if I brought him up, least, this is Nick Howell. He's from Fresno, California, where he attended high school. Nick was then recruited as an offensive lineman to play football for the University of Southern California, where he earned a Bachelor's of Arts and met his wife, Christian, Kristen, excuse me. They also have a one-year-old son, Patrick William. Upon graduation, Nick signed as a free agent for the Tennessee Titans, and later for the San Francisco 49ers, New Orleans Saints, and last but not least, the great Oakland Raiders. After his football career ended, he took another path and enrolled in fire science classes at Fresno Community College and Santa Ana College, where he completed the Basic Fire Academy, and then we were able to hire him as a firefighter. Nick is currently assigned to Fire Station 31. This is Nick Howell.
Welcome. Chief, let's take a photo.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Well, welcome. We're delighted you're here. And I think that's a really interesting message for young people in the audience. Did you hear tonight how several of these gentlemen had started off in one career, and then they decided to change careers? I think that's, that's great, because people can evolve and, and have different interests and pursue them, so I really appreciated hearing what their backgrounds were. So, the next thing we're gonna do is a presentation for volunteer recognition, and first, I would personally like to apologize that council didn't attend the celebration tonight. We were in closed session, and we went late, and I feel badly that we weren't there to visit with you, so please accept my apology. I wanna thank all the volunteers here tonight and the people who couldn't show up, because you play such an important part of our city, you give so much, you help all the departments in town with your commitment, but you're also like the heart and soul of our city, and you're just so involved in giving back, and it's always so wonderful to see friendly faces everywhere we go, and I hope you feel the same, too. So, we are going to have a celebration, and we're gonna be identifying everybody or recognizing everybody. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of city council. I'd like to start off by saying thank you to all of our volunteers and the hard work they do in this city, as you said. Without their hard work and dedication, many of the events and programs we run here in town would not be possible. So, at this time, we'd like to recognize all the volunteers. As we call your name, come up and receive a little token of our appreciation for what you do, and then please stay up here, and we'll take a picture with members of the council. So, from Friends of the Library, Kimberly Carter and Sarah
All right, next we have Udon Duick, who is originally from West Hills, California, but he spent the last eight years in Asheville, North Carolina. Udon attended Oxnard Community College Fire Academy and worked as an auxiliary firefighter for the Downey Fire Department. He was then hired as a firefighter with the Gastonia, North Carolina Fire Department, and after two years there, was hired by the Asheville Fire Department, where he has served as a firefighter and an engineer. We hired him back to California. Udon has an associate's degree in fire protection technology from AB Technical College in North Carolina and many job-related certificates, as well as a wealth of experience. Udon is glad to be back in Southern California, close to family and friends, and is currently assigned to Fire Station 31. Firefighter Udon Duick. Okay, last and certainly not least, because he'll probably pound me if I brought him up least, this is Nick Howell. He's from Fresno, California, where he attended high school. Nick was then recruited as an offensive lineman to play football for the University of Southern California, where he earned a Bachelor's of Arts and met his wife Christian, Kristen, excuse me. They also have a one-year-old son, Patrick William. Upon graduation, Nick signed as a free agent for the Tennessee Titans and later for the San Francisco 49ers, New Orleans Saints, and last but not least, the great Oakland Raiders. After his football career ended, he took another path and enrolled in fire science classes at Fresno Community College and Santa Ana College, where he completed the Basic Fire Academy, and then we were able to hire him as a firefighter. Nick is currently assigned to Fire Station 31. This is Nick Howell.
Wonderful. Well, welcome. We're delighted you're here. And I think that's a really interesting message for young people in the audience. Did you hear tonight how several of these gentlemen had started off in one career and then they decided to change careers? I think that's, that's great, because people can evolve and, and have different interests and pursue them, so I really appreciated hearing what their backgrounds were. So the next thing we're going to do is a presentation for volunteer recognition. And first, I would personally like to apologize that council didn't attend the celebration tonight. We were in closed session and we went late, and I feel badly that we weren't there to visit with you, so please accept my apology. I want to thank all the volunteers here tonight and the people who couldn't show up, because you play such an important part of our city, you give so much. You help all the departments in town with your commitment, but you're also like the heart and soul of our city, and you're just so involved in giving back, and it's always so wonderful to see friendly faces everywhere we go, and I, I hope you feel the same, too. So we are going to have a celebration and we're going to be identifying everybody or recognizing everybody. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of city council. I'd like to start off by saying thank you to all of our volunteers and the hard work they do in this city, as you said. Without their hard work and dedication, many of the events and programs we run here in town would not be possible. So at this time, we'd like to recognize all the volunteers. As we call your name, come up and receive a little token of our appreciation for what you do, and then please stay up here and we'll take a picture with members of the council. So from Friends of the Library, Kimberly Carter and Sari Brand. From the library, from the Library Historical Committee, Sharon Williams and Carrie King. From Library Youth Services, Kim Harris. Oh, you guys can go up and go by and, yeah. From the Literary Tutors, Jennifer Lord. Our library volunteers, Roya Mendipour and Laura Verandun. Our El Segundo Police Volunteers, Cheryl Bailey, Carol Cervantes, Maria Elderly, Joe McKenzie, and Dina Williams. Our Outreach Volunteers, Kimberly Caruso, Carol Hawn, Irene Turner, Diane Smith, Dawn Stewart, and Mona Schilling. Our Senior Club Members, Elaine Allen, Rex Ransom, Jim Twig, and Joyce Harris. Our Youth Volunteers, Cameron Carlton, Maddie Desamone, Neil and Patrick Fallon, Catherine Galanti, Chloe Cooper, Gabriel Ramos, Kaylee Scriber, Avery McRobert, and Kevin Goddard. Our Youth Drama Volunteers, Lisa Desamone, Shara Rice, and Jack Desamone. Sharon Dice. Our Environmental Committee Volunteers, Chris Lubes, Tracy Miller Zarnke, and Kevin From the Senior Citizen Housing Board, Paula Rotolo and Terri Sue Akins. From the Capital Improvement Program, Mike Rotolo. From the Centennial Committee, Heidi Wang. And then our last, from the West Vector Control, Carl Jacobson. Thank you, all of you volunteers, each and every one of you. We appreciate it.
Thank you. So would council, before we take a photo, like to say anything?
I was just going to say, thank you all, this town. Fortunate to live here for about 22 years, and I love, basically, the volunteerism, if that's even a word, I think I might have made that up. Is volunteerism a word? Maybe it is. But anyway, thank you all, because it, it's what makes this town so special. Tracy usually edits all my stuff, and she's not available today, so. Anyway, thank you all for everything you do to make El Segundo an incredibly special place. Thank you.
So we're going to try and do two pictures, because we have so many volunteers in the city. We'll do youth and all the drama volunteers on the second photo, and then everybody else in that first one, if that works.
Would you want to speak? Go ahead.
We're going to try to do this in one. Get the kids down, yeah.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Prosect?
Here.
Councilmember Brand?
President.
Councilmember Dugan?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Boiles?
Here.
Mayor Fuentes?
Here. Now is the time for public communication, related to city business only, five minutes per person, 30 minutes total. Seeing no public communications, we'll close. Okay, opening?
Hello, my name is Amy. This is my first time speaking at a council meeting. I'm a police assistant for the police department. I've been there for two and a half years. Since I started the police department, we have been trying to reach an agreement on our contract. I remember coming into a meeting my second day of work, wondering if I was still going to have a job after all this was over. Thankful to say that I'm still here, but it was and still is a very scary thing to see the things that are being taken away from us as a group, and even scarier to think what else is going to be taken away in future negotiations. Despite what's going on in our group, we still continue to work as hard as the day we were each hired. We've all had to adjust and work together to make sure the department continues to run and that the city is still protected, even being understaffed. I've been here the least amount of time and planned on making El Segundo my department until I'm of retiring age, but under these new contract conditions, it's going to push away myself and new staff that have been hired since the contract and deter any future candidates from even considering working for the police department in the future with the cuts that are being made. We have tolerated this because we are committed to this job and to serving the city. All we are asking for is a reconsideration on our contract. Allow us to revisit this contract and to come to an agreement together. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council. My name is Kelly Flowers, and I've worked for the city of El Segundo for 14 years. I work in the police department as a police service officer, and my duties include working in the jail, animal control, and parking enforcement. I've never spoken at a city council meeting. I feel compelled to speak today because of the current situation with our union negotiations. Feel the present proposal is not fair. We haven't had a raise in eight years. When the city was in the red, we took concessions, pay cuts, and furloughs. We made this effort to work with the city in good faith. It was our hope that this good faith would be reciprocated when times got better, but this hasn't been the case. The city has taken an adversarial approach with negotiations, and I don't understand that, because there are many hard-working, dedicated employees in this department. In the last 14 years, I've seen a great deal of change in the city. There's a misconception that bad elements don't make their way into the city of El Segundo, and this is not true. I've seen it firsthand, working in the jail. As I mentioned earlier, I've worked in animal control. I've never been bit by a dog or a cat, but I have been bit by a prisoner. During a booking search, which should have been fairly simple, the arrestee became very combative, and it took myself and a police officer, officer asked muse, and both of us to subdue her. In the process of restraining her, she bit me. And a couple of weeks ago, I was searching a prisoner prior to his transport to court and found a shank in the lining of his jacket. My point in sharing these two stories is to illustrate how chaotic and dangerous the jail can become in an instant. And the second point is to illustrate the value and importance of experience. Had that shank not been found, somebody very well could have been hurt or killed. In closing, I would like to say that it is my hope that there will be a reconsideration to return to the bargaining table and reach a reasonable remedy. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Lori Isma. I work in the El Segundo Police Department as a police assistant in our records division. When I applied for this job 14 years ago, El Segundo had an amazing reputation for taking care of the employees. You often heard this town referred to as Mayberry, a small town that everybody knew each other, cared for each other. I feel so fortunate to have a job with this city. This city maintains a high standard with hiring. It seems like that high standard should go hand in hand with our benefits and those who are making those decisions. Our group is a small group, the PSSA. We have 12 people, and we do not have high salaries. When the city was in the red financially and asked our groups to take a cut and do furloughs to help out the city, we did. We felt that if we helped our city out during this financial crisis, that in good faith, when the issues were resolved, the city would give back to us and restore our contracts. That never happened. In fact, there seems to be some kind of power struggle or grudge going on with the city employees and council. I previously heard that someone was told, if you don't like it here, you can go somewhere else. The reality of what you're saying is encouraging another person to leave this city, and the city they go to will benefit from the caliber of that person and the experience that El Segundo is willing to give up. In records, we are short-staffed. We should have six people. Due to layoffs and budget, we only have four. Two people per day, when there are actually three shifts to cover. Some days, it's just a police assistant and a jailer. Oftentimes, we don't have the luxury to help out residents with matters that are not involving the police. They will call us on the phone or come to the front desk, but we do it, and that's because of the experience of the people that are doing the jobs there in our records division. In a 10-hour shift, we handle the flow of crime reports, phones constantly ringing, preparing court filing paperwork for detectives on the subjects that were arrested by our police officers, those same criminals who commit crimes against the residents and the businesses here in El Segundo. At the police station front counter, we have people requesting police report copies, paying tickets, permits to be signed, citations to be signed off, crime reports to be filed, citizens wanting to speak to someone for advice regarding their child not behaving or refusing to go to school. I could go on and on with what we do for these citizens that are not involving any police matters. I'm not saying all of this because I want to go work for another city. I'm saying this because the residents of El Segundo, which you are part of, have become accustomed to a level of service that has been provided to them for a long time. That service comes from experienced, good people that used to be recognized as such in their contracts. My hope is that the council will see the value and dedication and experience of its employees that the residents have become accustomed to by honoring the good faith we showed when the city was financially in dire straits. This city is now in a good financial standing. I'm asking you to do the right thing, lay down the pride and egos, and see that taking good care of your city employees will have a long, positive effect for everyone across the board.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Susan Yonamine. I'm one of the members of the police service support group. And we are comprised of a small number of people that do exactly what our titles say. Our support and give the support to the law enforcement agency and to the people of the city of El Segundo. Many of us have been there a long time. What a lot of, what a lot has not been recognized is the fact that we have a job that is nothing like our job descriptions. It's very technical. There are a lot of things we have to know. The service officers are committed to doing the right thing as far as jail regulations, the laws that are required to complete their job. The records as well, we're very concerned, and we are responsible for the correct statistical information that goes out that shows that El Segundo is a safe place to come and live. Our, our membership is a very small group. A lot of people have already, the people that have spoken have already talked about a lot of the things that we go through. And a lot of our group, though, has been here for 20 years and more, at least like probably a third of our group. And our commitment is very strong to that accuracy, the technical knowledge, and the service that we level, that we give to the, you know, to the people, to the citizens, to the businesses, and the people that come and work and live in this city. It's, it's important to us. It's important to us to be that customer service person that they need and when they need it. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Anke Soot, and I am a youth manager at Tree Musketeers. On Saturday, October 22nd, Tree Musketeers will be taking part in the largest national day of community service, Make a Difference Day. We're holding a very large TLC for trees to the sea along the Imperial Highway. Taking care of these 500 trees is just as important as planting new ones, because trees help the environment the most when they reach maturity. When they become mature, each tree will generate $163,000 worth of oxygen, air pollution control, water recycling, and soil erosion prevention. Each of them will also take in two and a half tons of carbon dioxide in over 50 years. At Tree Musketeers, we believe that everybody can make a difference and that everybody's help is vital in taking care of our planet. This is why we want more of the community members out there to come and join us, and it's sure to be a great day of volunteering. Please call 310-322-0263 or email volunteers@treemusketeers.org by Friday, October 14th to register. I would like to give special thanks to Chevron, our sponsor for this event, for the continuous help and generosity, and thank you to everyone who is helping making this event possible. I look forward to seeing you on October 22nd at 9:30 a.m.
Back to follow. Good evening. My name is Neil Sholander, from Teamsters Local 911, on behalf of the Public Professional and Medical Employees Union. Our union is incredibly, our membership is incredibly dedicated, loyal not only to the professions, but also to the city, and they're a tremendous asset to their communities. With that in mind, our unit seeks to have a contract that is fair and just, and we're hopeful that council will come off its current transigence, negotiate the contract, give faith going forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Lawrence Harrington. I've been to the city, with the city for 26 years as a police service officer, and I've gone through several different jobs. I've seen a lot of changes since I've been here. I have never seen such a roadblock that we have present. Some of the roadblocks I've seen in the past, we was able to go around, but we still have some baggage behind us. Now that we're at this roadblock, it's even worse. I ask that you, council, go back to the table again, see can we negotiate this contract, come to a better conclusion. Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Paul Wilder. I grew up here in the city of El Segundo. I don't reside here now, but I still have family in town. I have a P.O. box here, so I visit the city frequently. I'd like to bring to everybody's attention an ongoing problem with the United States Postal Service, specifically the post office on Mariposa towards Douglas there. I'm sure everybody knows it. For about two years that I've noticed, but specifically about the last 16 months, I've noticed many, many times, countless times in fact, that our United States flag is being disrespected. is being disrespected because it is not being lowered in the evenings, many times. The United States Code and the flag etiquette dictate that if, if the flag is to be flown at night, it should be illuminated. However, it is the policy of the United States Postal Service, according to a letter I have here from the manager of postal operations, that the flag is to be lowered every day at the close of business. I have brought it to their attention and to Congressman Ted Lieu, from whom I have a letter here, that they, the, the issue is the, the flag's not being lowered, okay? Sometimes it, it is, sometimes it isn't. This past weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday night, in complete darkness, across the street, you have the fire station campus El Segundo, the American flag is being illuminated twenty-four hours, well, when the sun goes down. The, the manager of the postal service said to me in, in this letter that it is our policy to, to lower the flag at the, at the end of the day, and therefore that obviates the need to install a light, which I offered to do. One of my friends said he'll install free of charge, no charge for labor and material, to put a photovoltaic cell, uh, there on the pole or nearby, so if the people there forget, then the problem's been solved. I brought this up with a postmaster herself. She lied to my face several times, including saying that, in fact, in this letter from, from Congressman Lieu's office, it says that a person has been designated to lower the flag at the end of the day. And when that person can't do it, the postmaster herself will take responsibility, and I quote. So I'd like to think that our, our beloved city, aerospace capital of the world, for those of you who have been here a long time, that's what it was called at one time, Baseball City, USA, our beloved Mayberry, and I'd like to think that we could have the moniker of the city that loves our flag. Many of us here have taken the oath of, uh, to defend our constitution. I currently have two nephews who are active duty, one of whom will be deployed next month to the Middle East. When I look at our flag being disgraced on numerous occasions, it sickens me. And I'd, I'd like to request that the city council draft a resolution or draft a letter to address this issue. It's clearly not, uh, it's not being addressed. I, I actually requested formally to speak, to have a formal meeting with a, a manager of postal operations or any other of the top brass, or I was told that can't happen. So I mean, stonewalled, and I, I don't know what to do, and I'd like to bring it to your attention. Thank you.
See, no more public communications, closed for council comments? Well, I'd like to address Mr. Wilder. It has been brought to our attention, and the city manager and I have been in contact with representative from Ted Lieu's office, the postmaster, there are other people, city manager, you might remember, I invited them to come to the meeting tonight to talk about this. You're right, it's disgraceful. Either the flag gets removed at night and folded with dignity, or it's illuminated. So, um, as you're probably aware, the city doesn't have any jurisdiction over federal government.
Mayor, members of council, Ted Lieu's office has been particularly helpful, and we are going to have Mr. Coleman, the regional manager of operations from the, for the postal service, at an upcoming meeting. We're working on that scheduling. That request originally started around service issues of people not getting their mail delivered in a timely manner, or issues with the post office boxes. We can certainly raise this issue as well, and I think there are some other property maintenance, maintenance issues with the post office we'd like to see addressed. So, um, we will have Mr. Coleman here, um, and, and that will be an opportunity for the council and the community to, to point out the areas for improvement that we would like to see them make.
Yeah, in the meantime, we'd like immediate attention to the flag and the proper treatment of it. Any other comments? And Mr. Wilder, you neglected to say you're a U.S. Navy veteran, like our very own mayor Pro Tem. Okay, procedural motions, consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
All moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye opposed, five zero. Unfinished business, consideration and possible action to approve the following staff augmentations within the Public Works Department. One, reclassify a principal civil engineer position to city engineer, and two, approve the addition of one equipment mechanic, one slash two position, fiscal impact one hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. City manager?
Mayor, members of the council, we're, we're four days into our new budget year, and, and council adopted a budget, um, that specified, um, how we are going to operate the next year and, uh, areas for capital improvements and some additional areas for consideration with respect to technology and staffing. At the last budget hearing, uh, the decision was made that, that we needed some additional information for a number of these positions and, and for some of the technology requests. So we will be coming back to you with that additional information. This is a first of those requests, and it deals with two staffing positions in the Public Works Department, and I'll ask Stephanie Cazaleus, our Director of Public Works, to make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I sent you quite a bit of information. Um, there's a lot of information contained in the staff report, and, um, there's some additional attachments that go with that, but I'd like to start first with the proposal to reclassify a principal engineer to a city engineer. First and foremost, we've grown. As you know, we've doubled in the past couple of years, and with that doubling of staff has come a doubling of resources and efforts. And I'm going to quickly pass out one thing that wasn't in your packet, but was a request for information. Basically, what it shows is, um, in the year 2010, which is when I started, we had overall twenty-six contracts pushed through Public Works. Of those, seven of them were specific C I P projects. Um, between 2011 and 2016, that number went from thirty-six to fifty-five to sixty-five to seventy-four to now eighty-three total contracts pushed through Public Works. In terms of the number of those that are actual C I P projects, it's grown from seven to eight to eleven to this year, twenty-two projects. So hopefully you can see with the amount of staff that you allocated to me over the past couple of years, we have really hit the ground running in, in pushing out the sore leaning capital projects that have been kind of stagnant for years and years. Um, also in terms of funding, we were in the range of one to two million. We jumped to five million one year when we got a grant to do Maple Avenue, but we were in the ballpark of the, the two to three million. This year, we're spending twelve million. Um, those twenty-two projects that we've activated contracts for total twenty-two million dollars. So in the reformation of our department and growing and, and re-prioritizing capital, we need to adjust staff-wise to meet that growing need. So my staff time has gone in the ballpark of thirty to forty percent in any given year to over ninety percent into the engineering department. And that means that I can no longer effectively manage the rest of the engineering divisions because my time has become all-consuming with the twenty-two projects. So my proposal today is to realign the resources that we have so that we have one effective manager who's responsible for the C I P that is above and beyond just me. So that's, that's overall the proposal for engineering. And the proposal for vehicle maintenance is a little bit different, and there's a lot of information in your packet for that as well, but the, the nuts and bolts of it is we've grown over the last twenty years, over fifty percent in our vehicles. And along with that comes the maintenance requirements of those vehicles, and in 2011, we adopted a new policy to keep a lot of our vehicles even longer than we traditionally do, which means over time, they're going to require even more maintenance than they would otherwise require. So we would like to restore the position that we had for the first fifteen of those twenty years. We had five people in vehicle maintenance servicing a hundred and three cars. We now have four people servicing a hundred and fifty-nine cars. And one of the questions that was asked is, why have we grown in our fleet? And it's a very valid question. And I've included in your packet an itemized list of every single vehicle that we have and how that vehicle is allocated. And the, the not-so-short answer is, is twofold. One is, we had positions that probably needed vehicles that didn't have them in the earlier days, and then we have resources that we kept and held on to to implement a kind of redundancy to make us more effective. So as an example, Public Works now has two dump trucks in the Streets Division, and the use of those two dump trucks allows us to leverage our staff resources. And by that, I mean, if I'm going to do an asphalt job, uh, we'll use one dump truck to dig out all of that asphalt. We'll have another dump truck that has gone to the, um, hot mix facility, loaded its truck, and it will come and be ready the minute that that asphalt has been removed to put back the new asphalt. If we only had one dump truck, I'd have to remove it, I'd have to have my guys stand for a while, go get some asphalt after we went to the dump, and then come back and restore it, and I'd have four or five guys sitting around waiting for that cycle to happen. So that additional dump truck leverages our resources so that we're going all the time. That example carries throughout every department where some built-in redundancies allow us to be efficient, allow us to maintain full operations while things are being, um, maintained or repaired, and, um, allows us to function most efficiently. And then in addition to just the hundred and fifty-nine vehicle growth, um, you've seen on your list also a total of four hundred and thirty-four pieces of equipment. So it's not just cars that need to be maintained, it's mowers, it's generators, it's pump facilities, it's, um, chainsaws. So what I'm asking for here is to really focus and realign the resources that we need to do our jobs the way that they should be done. Right now, we're cutting corners and we're simply not getting to things. Um, the staff report shows that we spent over thirty thousand dollars on average just on overtime to try to keep up, and we're not even keeping up with that. So my request to you today is restore the position that we need for the fleet that we have grown into and for the equipment that we have grown into so that we really are right-sized for our responsibilities.
Stephanie, can you clarify that the one position is a promotional opportunity, it's not a new position?
The, um, the city engineer is a conversion from a principal to a city engineer.
And on the vehicle maintenance, the, the basic vehicle schedule we'd like to achieve is one service every six months.
Service every six months.
And where are we at right now?
Uh, we're not even one a year.
Questions, comments?
I had an opportunity to meet with Stephanie one-on-one and get a lot of this information. She answered a lot of my questions. Thank you for that. I have a much better understanding now of the need.
I had a chance to go through the, uh, information that was given to us, and thank you for sharing that. I guess it, it, to me, it raises as many questions as it answers, to be honest with you, and, and your example of us with the two dump trucks today and being efficient here, um, you know, I wonder how many times a year do we use both dump trucks? How many, how often are they utilized? You know, we have, how many employees? Two hundred and eighty employees, and we have a hundred and sixty vehicles here, so, um, you know, there's, you showed me some data in here that says the vehicle count has gone from a hundred to a hundred and sixty over the last five or so years, twenty years? Okay. The, the reason I was hesitant to add bodies headcount during the budget was because I was looking to see that we were going to do a thorough job of surveying our departments to see what are we doing? And in that, I would consider a, an, a thorough survey to include, uh, questioning the people on the things that we're doing, that we shouldn't be doing, what are the things that we're doing that we need to keep doing, and what are the things that we're not doing that we should be doing? And get a more vetted look at our equipment, our status, what do we have, what should we have? Should we be renting some equipment if we're not utilizing it? By renting it, we're not maintaining it? There's options out there and things that we ought to be looking at to see how efficiently are we running the city right now? Like, I have a lot of questions as to how are we going to conduct that survey and everything else? I appreciate that you've given us a bunch of data and you're asking me to make a decision, but I'm no smarter today than I was a month ago when we talked about this because I haven't seen, in my opinion, a thorough vetting of what are the needs for the city? What are we going to be doing in the future? What have we been doing for the last five years or so? And where are we headed for the city? So that's, that's the, the hesitation I have to add staff or manpower in on a permanent basis. If we have to do some things on a short-term basis and can contract things, uh, I would look into that, but I would look for a more thorough of analysis. And I'm looking to the city manager, Greg, I think this is your responsibility to vet these things out and to have a, a plan of where we're going in the future, where we've been and where we're going, and where these people are going to be, because quite frankly, we're asking to add full-time people in here that are on the organization, and these benefited costs of the employees is high, and we have, we ought to be fiduciarily responsible to make sure that we need those. And the justification of I can add hours of service that need to be putting on equipment that I'm not getting done right now, I'm not sure that that's the right analysis. That's one piece of the, of the story, but it's not a, a complete story for me to be comfortable adding positions in here. So again, I'm not, uh, uh, this isn't the kind of analysis I was looking for, is my answer back to you. I was looking for a more thorough one on departments, what are we doing, what do we, what do we need to be doing in the future and where are we headed? As opposed to looking backwards and saying, what are, what do I need to maintain what I used to have? That's a, that's a different look.
One thing I want to add, and it's in the staff report, but I didn't mention it, but we absolutely capitalize on contracts. For this division alone, we have a hundred and thirty different vendors that we use. So we have, in every instance possible, tried to maintain that efficiency by using vendors where it makes more sense to do that than to hire staff. But there are situations where it doesn't make more sense to use a vendor, in fact, it would cost the city double to use a vendor. Um, and that's where we get back into the, the core functions of this department. So, um, you can see just by the number of invoices that we've processed, over seven hundred for this fiscal year. Um, that's probably more than any other division in this entire city. It, it equates to multiple invoices per day, which means that those invoices had an action associated with them, whether that was delivering a car and picking it up, or ordering a part, um, or going to a supply house. Every one of those has time associated with it that represents that invoice or that vendor that we use. So, um, I, I agree that we should be looking at these. In, in this case, um, we did, and we are at maximum efficiency for those types of opportunities.
Mayor, are you ready to entertain a motion?
Did you have any comments?
Yeah, I, I would like to see, and I already talked to Stephanie about this a little bit, but we're moving towards more of a performance-based organization. We're going to measure department, um, performance. And I would like, to Mike's point, I, I support this position, but I would like to better understand as a city, our equipment utilization, uh, what it is exactly on an ongoing basis so that we can get a sense of that. And I do think that down the line, not, not this year, not next year, but in the future, there are opportunities to use other things than just purchasing assets. So I would hope that we'd embrace new technology, ride-sharing, uh, resource-sharing, et cetera, to get there potentially, but in the short term, um, I think you have a need based on our conversations, and I support that. And I think the thing that Stephanie didn't mention is the, that she told me earlier, was that the position that you're elevating gives stronger lines of authority and definition in your department as well, which will help the department total, so, thank you.
And I, and probably three or four years ago, I know, we sold off some of our fleet that wasn't needed. I would like to look at that because we have point-six vehicle per city employee, which is a lot when you consider the majority of our employees don't need to drive a vehicle.
Yeah, and, um, one of the things that I put in your staff report, and I'm sorry I didn't explain it, but in the actual spreadsheet of just the rolling stock, there are some sections that are in blue as opposed to white, and those are designated, designated specialty vehicles. So, um, for example, again, in, in my Streets Division, I need a loader, I need a forklift, I need a dump truck. Those are things that I need to do the core functions of the Street Departments, but that's above and beyond the service vehicles for all of the other things that we do. So the city has, um, not- So, the city has not quite half, but maybe a third, or a little bit more than a third, of those type of vehicles, that are considered specialty vehicles, that are needed to perform certain functions, above and beyond core functions. Above and beyond, sort of, core ability to get around.
And I know, years past, we've had the conversation about why we don't rent those, as we need them, instead of buying them and maintaining them.
Yeah, the break-even point, if I recall correctly, because we looked at this about two or three years ago, the break-even point for renting versus owning, was about three weeks in a year. I'm sorry?
Weeks in a month?
No, in a year. Because you build in the staff time it takes to go and rent it, you have to look at the minimum rental time, which is typically for a week, and then how much you would use that vehicle for what you do, and the break-even time was about three weeks.
So maybe you can provide some of that data to Councilmember Dugan.
I move approval of the staff augmentations requested by the Public Works Department.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
4-1, thank you. Reports of committee, commission, and boards, consideration and possible action to receive and file the Capital Improvement Program Advisory Committee Report, for the 2016-17 fiscal year. Fiscal impact none. City Manager?
We're going to have Mike Rotolo, the Chair of the CPAC, Capital Improvement Advisory Council, make his report. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. It's always hard to say that acronym. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, happy to report that we had a successful, several meetings with our CPAC Committee this year. A great group of people, with knowledge, and the patience, and the understanding of projects that were brought before us. We had a public communication meeting, where a couple of members of the community participated, and we reviewed 13 projects that were brought before us, ranked them in order of importance. That's the role of our committee, just for the public, so you know. Every different division of the city will come in with projects they think are needed. Our role is to rank them on a scale that we have, under criterias for safety, payback, all these different categories, and then we will put them in order of importance, so that you can know when your budget is met, and what can be done this year. Presented to you this year was, for approval, you approved about $830,000 of the 1.8 million. So, a fair amount of the projects did get approved. And I think we had a successful year, and Public Works, Stephanie really helped us go through this. So that was just basically our report. As always, we see a need for more capital projects being approved. I've served on this committee several years, and it's always a struggle, I know, for you and your budgets, but I know you're aware of it, but there certainly are a lot more projects that would be great to serve our city, if they could be afforded in future years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and your committee, and I know there are a couple of years where there wasn't anything done. The committee wasn't even meeting, because the city didn't have the funds. So, thank you. Consent agenda, any polls?
Mayor, I have a question on the CPAC report.
Yes, sir.
Right, so, on page 6 of the report, it lists your priorities for the proposed projects, and I'm wondering, once the dust settled, how do we do on that? Did we get the retractable bollards on Main Street, the number-one priority? How about the crosswalk lighting on Main? We got that in, didn't we?
That was approved, yes.
Yeah, crosswalk lighting, retractable bollards did not make the cut, even though they were our highest-ranked project. So, it would have been great to see that, but I understand, you know, that is a benefit that will aid in how to set up the barricades, there's other ways to do it, which have been done, so...
But you considered all that, and still placed this number-one. Why didn't we get it on our list?
We discussed it. We discussed it. I had asked, I know, in the past, there were opportunities for grants for Homeland Security for bollards, and I had inquired if there was still an opportunity for grants for that. So, we did discuss it recently.
And to my understanding, there weren't any opportunities for grants for that this year?
There are a lot of good projects on that list, and we did prioritize the crosswalks, because they're used on a daily basis. And we thought we have a good temporary solution to protecting farmer's market. We park vehicles across the street, but it's not the most aesthetic treatment, and long-term, we'd like to support the bollard installation.
The facility needs assessment didn't make it, correct? So, I served on the CPAC for two or three years, and we would have our meetings, and make up our lists, and sometimes it would go nowheres, when it came to the council. And so I'm kind of checking in, 10 years later, we still have them doing this work for us, and providing their recommendations, and some of them go south, when they get to the council. And I wouldn't be very happy if I was on that committee, if I felt nobody was listening to the results of my work. I didn't feel good about it, when I was doing it. So, I'm just confused, how your number-one item doesn't get in our budget, when other things did, in this area? And how your members feel about that?
I think we all understand, our role is to do all the legwork to provide to you. We also understand that there's other considerations, that we're not privy to, so we understand your position on that. Yeah, I think it would have been great to have the bollard project in there. I also know that the other projects, with the sidewalk replacements, and the curb and gutter, and the street rehab, are very important as well. So I know that, through your discussions, I'm sure you're considering all of these things, and sometimes that'll change the ranking of what we come up with. But yeah, it would be great to be able to see, you know, every one of those projects that ranks in the top, approved.
Director's still out there? Yep, there she is. So, can you explain why bollards didn't get in your budget? That was brought to us to approve?
I mean, it actually was brought for consideration, and it was not selected. But it is, when you didn't select it for this budget year, I put it in next year's budget, under our five-year projection. It's gone right into next year's column, as soon as it wasn't selected.
Yeah.
So it'll be coming back.
I'm not picking on that, I'm just trying to figure out the work of the committee, and where it ends up going, and how things don't get implemented, that our panel of experts has asked us to. Because this isn't the first time this has happened.
No, this is...
It usually happens.
This is about the fourth time, fifth time. When I came on in 2010, and we started doing the CPAC, there was not general fund funding, and so the only thing that they were evaluating, were our core CIP, through enterprise funds, or through gas tank, so, slurry seal, water main, sewer main improvements, and there's really no evaluation of those, those are what we do every year. Then there was a period of at least two years, where we didn't even meet, because there was no general funding, and we were in a budget deficit. And then, next year, we had put forward a whole citywide list, through all the department heads, if you recall, for really sorely-needed infrastructure, like our roofing system, the apparatus bay doors, the seismic retrofit, and council allocated 3.2 million, not through the CPAC process. And last year, we started the CPAC again, there was about 900,000 and change recommended, and there was zero funding put towards that. So this is really the first year, probably since 2011, 10 or 11, that there has been general fund allocations, for the things that they evaluate. And I will say that, independent of that, when they evaluate things, and we find funding, we implement them anyways. So, probably 50% of what the CPAC has evaluated, over the past six years, has actually been implemented.
Thank you. And I would like to say that, all the committees and commissions give recommendation to the council, but the council has the final responsibility to choose, based on all of our knowledge of the budget, and what the needs of the city are. But I did bring up the bollards, so... So, consent agenda polls?
Yes, I'd like to pull number seven and number eight.
Number four, please.
Any others? May I have a motion to approve item 3, 5, 6?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? 5-0. Item 4, was that you, Councilmember?
It is. Right. I'd like to get some background on the process here. So, we've been having a lot of meetings lately, and each meeting requires a set of minutes. And we even had a meeting, I believe, on the 29th of September, the day after this second set here. I'd like to ask the city attorney, is it required that the minutes of a meeting be returned for council approval at their next regular meeting? Or could that be delayed, to give the clerk opportunity to get them done, so that we can receive them in the packet and read them?
No, they are, they're not required to be put in the next packet. It could be delayed.
Yeah. My recommendation is, if they're not going to be ready for the packet, they be delayed, and be on the agenda, once they're ready, and we've had a chance to review them, to be sure they're an accurate record of what we talked about. I have not had a chance to look at the minutes, which we received around 5 o'clock tonight, and we've been busy since then, constantly. The clerk has been short-staffed, we're starting, took some action to do something about that. But I need a chance to look at items, and review them, before I'm expected to vote for them. So I'm not going to vote around these minutes, and I would request that they be brought back on a future agenda.
Is that your motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? 5-0. Thank you.
Thanks.
Item 7 and 8?
Yeah.
Item 7, excuse me.
So I just had a question to Steph...
Could you read it, please?
Do you want me to read the whole thing? Consider impossible action, 1, grant environmental construction. Inc.'s request to withdraw their bid, because of clerical error, in accordance with Public Contract Code, Section 5101. 2, award a standard Public Works contract to the second lowest bidder, Steve P. Radius, Inc., for the pump station #1, and #7, modification improvement project #PW16-07. And 3, award a standard Public Works professional service agreement to AKM, consulting engineers for construction inspection services, fiscal impact $3,63,000. So my question to you is, I understand, we need to move forward with the pumps, I want to make sure that, at this time, are we looking at them, from a seismic standpoint as well, to ensure that we are, you know, we're not just looking at it from a replacement, but looking from a seismic, from an earthquake preparedness? They're not above-ground facilities, they're below-ground facilities, and we've not done an assessment on whether the actual well itself complies with today's seismic codes, but that is absolutely something that we can add. Typically, wet wells that are of this size, don't have the same kind of structural requirements that an above-ground structure would have. The ground itself provides additional shear strength.
Stephanie, you would do an assessment of the condition of the existing vault, correct?
Yeah.
See if there's any major cracks, or if it has performed well over time.
Correct. Yeah, we can easily add that. Okay, yeah.
Do we have a motion?
All right, so I'll move to approve, number 7. Do I have to read it again? No.
Second?
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? 5-0. Item number 8?
All right, consideration and possible action regarding reapproval of ongoing professional service agreements, and blanket purchase orders, for fiscal year 1617, in excess of $25,000 for various departments. Impossible action to waive the formal bidding process, and authorize a continued purchase of various goods and services, as described below. Fiscal impact included in the FY1617 budget. General Fund, $1,822,608, including a 5,000 library developer fees, assessment forfeit fund for $13,000. Prop A Fund, $30,000. Water Enterprise Fund, at $224,000. Waste Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, for $28,000. Golf Course Enterprise Fund, for $96,000. Workman's Compensation Fund, for $168,150. Public Works Full-Time Salary Accounts, General Fund, Water and Waste Water Enterprise Funds, and 405 facility maintenance funds, at $200,000. So my issue on this, what I wanted to talk about, is number 13 and 14, and then 19 and So for 13, on the golf course, my question to the city manager is, when is the last time we actually looked at the agreement, and reviewed the details of the agreement for the golf course? And do we want to assess it, before we just sign it blanketly? Do we want to reevaluate it, to ensure that the contract services the needs for the city today? Because I believe that the terms of the deal have not been looked at, for quite a long time.
The last time we looked at this agreement, was when we negotiated a reduction in the management fee, with the management company, but the terms, I don't think really changed, the operating terms and conditions, I don't believe changed at that time. It was the monthly, which translated to the annual management fee, that we were paying these folks. There has been discussion, over the years, of changing this from sort of a flat deal, where we cover their costs, and pay them a management fee, to more of a performance-based model, where we're incentivizing this management company, or a successor management company, to improve sales, improve performance, and that they would share in those profits, so... Staff's recommendation around this issue, since we have a lot going on at the golf course right now, with the Topgolf, and the changes to the plan, was that we focus on those issues, potentially look at changing the agreement, once we've decided on where we're going with the golf course, as it relates to Topgolf. The city council can instruct us to move forward quicker than that, if they wish to do that. I think that would be a task, that the golf course subcommittee, and the Rec and Parks Commission could take on initially, and make a recommendation to the full council.
When was the last time, what was the year we actually reviewed the contract?
Do you recall, Mark? It was before my time.
So it's been over how long, many years?
Over five years, at least.
And don't you think we should be reviewing these contracts, to make sure they're adequate to satisfy our needs?
Yes, we should.
So I'd like to pull that one, and review the contract, to make sure it's...
So, are the terms about that, not just the $96,000, have those changed, or is it the same arrangement we had this past year, the year before?
Same arrangement, the last couple of years. Like I said, I believe we did negotiate a lower management fee, several years ago, when we were experiencing financial issues.
Came down about, a little more than, almost 15%, if I remember right. But with the onset of what Topgolf is going to do, this contract, the $96,000 may not even be, that's a full-year service, and there's a good chance we won't engage Lynn Donovan for a full year next year, if they go in there and start demolition, anytime before the end of the year. So I'm, you know, I mean, I'm all for keeping this one current, but this isn't the time to spend resources negotiating a contract, that we're going to have to scrap anyhow, and start all over again, so...
So is this a year-by-year contract?
It's an annual fee, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
But why would we pay $96,000, if during the fiscal year, we're not going to be able to use it? And they're due to get $96,000 from this, but there'll be times when they don't have anything to do, because of the project there, with Topgolf?
I think it says not to exceed 96, which I would assume, if there's a paration portion of the year, that's not incurred.
Okay, have we got language on that? Because I mean, it'd be unusual, when it's not open, and we can't use it, it'll be an odd... odd hire.
We have not, we have not made the final decision on Topgolf yet, for one. And there, hopefully, will be some continued operation during the Topgolf construction, or at least some maintenance of the portion of the golf course that's not being disrupted. We may well have to renegotiate with Lane Donovan to address those periods of limited operation.
My recollection is there's a 30-day termination provision in the agreement. We'll double-check that to make sure that there is, because when we do get to that point with Topgolf, we're going to need to be terminated or renegotiated.
Yeah. I'd like to pull number 13 out of these approvals to give you a chance to see what that language is, and perhaps put some language in around the eventuality that they're not going to have a normal year in 1617.
You could approve, I think most of our agreements have-
The language is in there, I'm pretty sure.
I think it is, but I'll, I'll double-check, and if it's not, we'll put it in before anything gets, you could approve this, but before anything gets executed, I'll make sure the right language is in there to protect the city. I'm pretty certain it is, but we'll double-check.
Okay, and then my issue is also on 19 and 22, in similar-
What about, did you say 14?
I know, I mean, I'm going to pass 14 and come back to 14. 19 and 22 was, once again, these are services that we're paying for because we do not have our own in-house website or-
Can you read them, please?
Oh, I have to read, the authorizing issuance of the blanket purchase order to date a proposed agreement, number 3227, to provide water and sewer divisions utility bill print and mail services for an amount not to exceed $30,000 in FY1617 water and wastewater sewer enterprise funds. And then 22 is authorize the city manager to execute a one-year contract with Professional Account Management LLC for processing of parking citations, collections, not to exceed $55,000 in FY1617 general fund. My concern is that if we automate our, improve our website and add a component where we can do online payment, we will not need these. So I want to make sure that the language is clear, that we can prorate our usage of these contracts, and it's not a full year.
We can, again, most of our contracts have 30-day termination provisions, but we'll make sure that, such is the case, to again account for that potential.
And then number 14, this is the authorize the city manager to extend agreement, number 4096, with True Green Landscape, Land Care, excuse me, in a form approved by the city attorney, and issuance of a blanket purchase order to provide weekly landscape services for an amount not to exceed $181,000 in FY1617 general fund. I've asked Greg to look at the landscaping on Main, down Main Street, to see if we could include the landscaping down Main Street, which has not been kept up to a high standard into this contract. So I would like to look at that and, to see how much that would impact that.
I've spoken with our Recreation and Parks Director, and we will be getting a quote to add those services and evaluate that against the current service model and a potentially modified service model. And with respect to the billing, you know, there may be some efficiencies we get through automation. I believe we use both of those services because they are more efficient than using city staff. So if we have, we can look at automated systems and how much staff time they would require, and potentially there is a change of direction we could go in with these. But in both the billing and the parking citation models, right now, it is cheaper for us to use an outside service to manage those for us than it is to have staff onsite providing those services.
Ideally, it would be nice for item 19, which is utility bill, print, and mail, to go paperless, to give people the ability to opt out of getting paper bills.
Yeah, I think when you get a website that has the ability for you to pay online, you will need to have, you will not need these services, and you should be able to do the men's house, because it will go directly to your finance department.
Well, we can pay our water bills online.
I would love to see that happen, though. Carol, I think we're going to still have, there's going to be a contingency that's going to want to mail in their check, still, for the foreseeable future. So we're going to have a fee there. Probably we can negotiate a reduction if we can figure out the technology.
Or find a way to do it ourselves.
And there are people who like to walk their checks in, also make their payments in person. So do you want to make a motion to approve all those?
I'll make a motion to approve-
Or the whole item?
The whole item, yeah. Item number eight.
Second?
Second it.
On favor? Aye. Opposed? Five, zero. Thank you. No new business. Report, city manager.
Couple of quick items. Staff and I met this morning. We're putting together the work program for the year. We have some additional work to do, so we'd hope to present that to council either late October or November. It is going to be a draft. I know that council is going to want to add items to that effort for the coming year. We've certainly heard about equipment replacement in the fleet, and those are, if, those are evaluations and audits that we can do as part of the upcoming work program, if it's the desire of the council. I did want to publicly thank, and I think council's probably going to talk about this in more detail, but I did want to publicly thank Barbara Voss for her great event last week, our economic development manager. It was fabulous. I think it went without a hitch. It was one of the, I think, the better organized events I've attended, either put on by the city or anybody. The R1 Committee, which council member Dugan is a member of, is looking for community input. There's a survey out on the city's website, city's Facebook page, asking for community input around primarily modulation and what those design and setback requirements should be for new construction in the R1 Zone. The city is having a disaster preparedness fair. It's on Saturday, October 15th, from 9:00 to 1:00. It's going to be in the City Hall Plaza, and there will be vendors, there will be instructional information, there will be giveaways and raffles, and this is disaster preparedness week. It's obviously important. There's a lot of concern this week around earthquakes, and this is an opportunity for the residents to come out and become more prepared. The police department is having coffee, is conducting coffee with a cop this Friday, Starbucks, Plaza El Segundo. The chief can provide more information on that, but it's an opportunity. Chief, can you come up? And tell us about Coffee with a Cop?
We have two programs this weekend. One Saturday will be a women's self-defense program that we do at the police station from 8:00 to 11:00 o'clock. And then we're also having Coffee with a Cop, where we go out to meet members of our community at the Starbucks, and I believe the Starbucks we're using is one of the most popular ones. They always are, aren't they? But we get a chance to meet with our community and hear their concerns, and that's what we do. It's Friday at 8:00, sir. The address, Bobby?
Plaza El Segundo.
Plaza El Segundo, yeah. But we're more than happy to welcome you to come up in the morning, sir.
And will they be able to have coffee with the chief as well?
Well, the chief will be out there, ma'am, but I don't drink coffee.
Maybe a little chai, a little chai with the chief.
I will be drinking water.
Water with the chief.
And maybe when I retire, it'll be beer with the chief. So, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. That concludes my report.
Thank you. City attorney?
Nothing this evening.
City clerk?
Nothing this evening.
Our city treasurer's not here this evening. Council member Bran?
Okay, we've been working pretty hard here, and in a very short period of time, we dealt with the Imperial School matter, a long time coming. We adopted the budget for 1617 year, and we figured out how to move forward with the Aquatic Center, all within maybe a 24-hour period. So things came together. The EDAC meeting was great at Millennial Space, and the event at Vista Mar was just over the top, terrific, and I think was very appropriate considering the main person that we were honoring. I think he enjoyed it, and he certainly deserved it. And tomorrow and the rest of the week, I'm going to attend the League of California Cities meeting in Long Beach. I'll get my ethics training again, and be motoring back and forth between El Segundo and the meetings down there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council member Prostuck?
I want to first off thank all the volunteers for giving back to our community. It's important that we all get involved, that everyone gets involved. The more people get involved, the better our city will be. I mean, it's also great to see the youth get, you know, participate in the volunteerism because it's setting, establishing a record for them to continue that throughout their lives. So thank you to everybody who volunteered this year for the city and other organizations. I wanted to remind people that we are still accepting applications for the Technology Committee. This is a committee that we've just recently formed to help us drive the, guide the city into improving the technology within this, within our system, from a system standpoint. So please, if you're interested, get your application into Masha. We're hoping to have the interviews October 18th. So please get them in before that date, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Council member Dugan?
Yeah, there's, one of the things that we did act on last week was also the pool, and I had, you know, I'm glad that we're moving forward with it. There's a perception out there that we're kind of getting a pool for free because everything is kind of getting paid for around us. And I'd just like to share with the community here that, you know, El Segundo is one of the biggest contributors to this pool going forward, when you look at our commitment to operate the pool. The operating expenses of the pool are going to be in the $400,000 to $500,000 a year range, right? So if you take the net present value of that today for the next 30 years at 3%, that's roughly $10 million commitment that we're putting on the table. So when Wiseburn puts in $3-plus million for the land and another $6 million for the pool, that's $9 million, and then the South Bay Health and Recreation is going to put another $6 million. We're going to put in $1.8 million, plus we're committing to the net present value of another $10 million ballpark into that. So it's not a pool for free, but it's going to be a great organ, it's going to be a great asset to the community here, and it is going to cost us money. Now, we have the ability to offset that with revenue, and I have no idea how to measure that. That didn't come up in any of the analyses, other than people seem to think we'll make some money off of it. But it isn't something that we're getting for free. We have our wallets wide open to keep that place going, to get that place running, and it's going to be a great asset. But it isn't for free. I just want to pass that on to the community.
Thank you. Mayor Proten?
Yeah, the mayor and I are going to public information officer training in San Luis Obispo next week. That should be interesting. And Carol mentioned the Technology Committee. We also have openings in the Arts and Culture Committee, and so we're encouraging people to apply to that. The Champions of Business event was incredible, as Don said. I want to give congratulations not only to Barbara Voss, to the mayor for speaking, but also Don Kenaby, LA County outgoing supervisor, and Al Kiyah, he did a phenomenal job up there on stage. So it was a great event. It really put us in a great light in the business community. I had several people at my table, and others that came up and said, they were just like blown away at the, how impressed they were at that event and the magnitude of our speakers. And importantly, Carol and I almost won our first Bago match last week. We were this close, and then Krista and Dino, like in the final second, came out. She's a ringer, apparently, was stringing this along all along.
So, since we last met, as you heard tonight, we had a meeting for the Imperial School to approve D.R. Horton's plan. It's going to be great for the city. It's going to be wonderful for the school district. And what I am especially happy about is the six units that are set aside for low-income housing at this point have been, not earmarked, but they're going to work with the military in the area, who unfortunately could qualify for low income, to see if we can get six military families into those new homes. So I think that's wonderful. You heard about the swimming pool meeting we had. What I thought was really great is we had about, what, 30, 40 kids from the high school show up, the ones who are invested in water polo and swimming, and they stayed for the meeting, and it was just wonderful to have so many young people engaged in it, and we invited them back. Probably wasn't room tonight because of the volunteers, but I'm going to look for them next Tuesday. I attended the LAEDC Aerospace Council at LMU last week, maybe it was this week, which was very interesting. A lot of speakers, a lot of stakeholders, and the whole county were there. So we're working on our efforts to engage with aerospace companies, and of course, one of the big issues is always maintaining Los Angeles Air Force Base, which is really the jobs engine of this area. And also, got to talk about AB 306, the Hadley Bill for school choice for military families. That's a game changer. I attended, along with the city manager, a ribbon cutting at Zero Solar, which is a new business in town that provides solar. So we're excited to have them come over from Manhattan Beach. As you've heard from everybody tonight, the Champions of Business event was phenomenal. Thank you to Barbara Voss and Al Kiyah and EDAC. And for the last three or four years, we've been attending the Eddys down at the Beverly Hilton for the Most Business Friendly City, which we won last year. And I have to say, I think our event was every bit as nice as that or nicer. It was really phenomenal. The hard part is how do you beat that next year, right? I mean, it's just incredible. So thank you to our sponsors who made it possible. Thank you to all the businesses, to our speakers. We are so blessed in this town. Attended a Centennial Celebration Committee meeting with council member Bran. There's going to be some exciting things coming for that. And also this morning, I attended the South Bay Area Chambers of Commerce meeting that has to do, again, with aerospace and Los Angeles Air Force Base retention. And I'm looking forward to the disaster preparedness Saturday. So thank you, chief, for doing that. I'm grateful to you because it's so important that our residents and businesses are prepared for the disaster which will come. And as you heard from council member Bran, I'll be attending the League of California Cities, and I too will be attending ethics training first thing tomorrow morning down there. So with that, we'll go back to public communications. And seeing none, we are going to go back to closed session.